Hi, I'm Sean Newger.
Aye.
Works for me.
Let's just do it all in one vote.
Okay. Yeah. Is there anything you want to vote yes or no on?
Yes, all through this thing, done.
Okay. Uh, let's see, first the easy one, approve advertising for summer labor position with Highway Department. Summer labor, we have some flexibility on the amount and the hours. Uh, we can hire someone at thirteen hours for forty hours a week, or at a higher rate for less hours, or whatever. Flexibility, um, can start any date, but limited to six months.
Okay, so, yes.
I'll make a motion to advertise for the summer labor position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wonder if we should've said it, what amount? No.
No, because it's gonna vary.
Depends on their skills.
Depends on who's.
Okay. Uh, next.
Table that for the moment.
Okay, we'll table that, um, review of, uh, an approval of Doc's side park application. Where we're at with that is John said last week that he was gonna simplify or whatever, but his secretary was just leaving the office. He couldn't send it out, and I, and he was gonna send it out. He didn't, I reminded at the beginning of the week, not, or was it last week? It's been two weeks, he still hasn't sent anything. I, I wanna move ahead and just, and, and get this done, so, I think Marie made a few more changes.
I only got through half of it.
Okay, yeah, um, I agree.
You only got through half of it?
Yeah. Well, I only sent-
Half of what?
I only, no, no, I-
The new half of it that is?
I sent Marie's adjustments late today, so she hasn't looked very good. And barely don't help me anyway, I would, I would send it one more time Thursday to everybody.
Well, I, I, I'll, I'll finish going through it, um, tomorrow's really tough for me.
Well, we're gonna have to do it till next Tuesday, so.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, we're doing it next Tuesday. If no one has, I don't care if anyone has more stuff, we're not adding or taking it up, it's over. Next again, that application is fine. It's, I, I got an application for, for the roof up here that's longer than that, for a simple roof, you know? So, saying it's complicated or whatever.
I'm not saying it's complicated, I just didn't have the time today to review a twenty-one page document in, in six font.
Twenty-one pages?
Yes.
That Doc's side?
Yes, it's twenty-one pages, what did you think it was?
But we've looked through the, uh, everything besides the agreement a hundred times over, and every weekly we've changed it.
The agreement goes back to the document and everything costs, oh, anyway, okay.
Okay.
One more time, can you tell John to stop please before he sends us a bill, tell him not to do anything?
I will, okay.
Get billed anyway.
Yeah, he's simplifying, kinda cost this.
I can imagine.
Um, next is, uh, the request for fence, which we haven't really got a formal request, you know? We, we, Pat's, Rebecca came in and was talking about it. I went up and looked, I saw her today and asked her exactly what they wanted to do, so, I caught her just as she's coming out of her house, and we went to the backyard, so, on the south side of their property, which is their property, they planted, uh, evergreens of some sort, which will, I don't know how big they're gonna grow or whatever, but they're spaced apart. On the north side, it's our property on the top, and it comes down thirteen feet, so it's definitely our property. There's the fence, which is covered by phrasithia, which are large, and, uh, whatever, I think they're really nice. Uh, she, she, you know, it's all in the eye of the beholder, she's not, they, they wanna take those out 'cause they said after they bloom or whatever, they're not the greatest looking, although my argument beak, you can cut them and do whatever you want with them, um, but they wanted to take those out and the fence out and plant the same type evergreens along that.
Why can't they, why can't they plant the evergreens on their side of the fence, and leave the fence there?
They could do that, they could.
I mean, I, I don't understand the, the need to remove the fence.
I don't, or I think you could take the fence out of there and leave the phrasithia so thick there, you don't need a barrier at all.
I mean, basically, she's just asking because it's a chain link fence and it's on our property, right? Can she take it down?
She wants to remove-
She wants to take that down, remove all the phrasithia, and then put up these evergreens.
And there's no problem with any of that, other than the fact that, is it our fence or is it her fence?
It's our fence, our property.
And she wants to put evergreens on our property.
Someone built a fence on our property, is really what happened, right? Like, it wasn't, the villagers didn't go and just randomly put a fence in.
I, I have no idea who put the fence up.
It was there before they got there.
I mean, between chain link fences are ugly.
It's ugly.
Chain link fences are ugly.
Yeah, although you can barely see it, when the phrasithia are in, in bloom or in a leaf, you can barely see it.
Well, I don't, I have no problem with them taking the fence down, 'cause it's ugly.
Do you have a problem with them putting, planting evergreens on village property?
Uh, that's another matter, I think, but I think the fence-
But that's the intention.
Well, let's start with the fence then.
We have to be careful what we say and stuff, I mean, what it says is, she's just asking us if she can remove the fence. And if that's all she's asking, then, then I don't have no problem with it. If she's asking, can I remove the fence and put something there, then that's a different, that's a different question.
So, let's say she is, is asking to put something there, what's your response to that?
No, it's her property, okay, by the property, if she can buy it, but I'm sure it's massive.
Yeah, that's quite a strictly.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been there, so I don't know.
So, why don't I get back to her and ask her to, to, to send a formal request?
So, exactly what she wants.
Okay, well, that's what she wants. It's not, not in writing though, but I don't know, maybe she would just be happy with taking the fence out if we don't allow that other, you know? And along with Steve, I would say, yes, you can take the fence out.
Right, yeah, but putting something else.
I like the fence.
You do, it's in good shape, it's black.
Yes.
Okay, so, I will, I will ask her for a formal request and, and say that it seems like they're, were in favor of removing the fence, not too happy about the other, or not too sure.
Not sure.
Not sure. Uh, discussion of water sewer assessment?
So, I spoke with Michael Cunningham today, he's the director of, um, the senior resources, whatever department it is. And the question was, what kind of, uh, facilities are in the kitchen? And the answer is, they're, oh, first off, I asked, what do they do in the kitchen? And he said they do some cooking, they do some baking and broiling there, which I didn't realize. The rest of the stuff is all trucked in. Uh, in the kitchen, there are two hand washing sinks, one food prep sink, and one three bowl sink, which is exactly what we were told last week was required for, um, a, a, a kitchen configuration. I explained to him what the procedure was that we were going to follow, and what we had originally thought about, water rents and sewer rents. So, going back to that, what we had talked about was six water rents, and with the understanding that there was one, a single bowl sink in the kitchen, two point five sewer rents. With the configuration that they have now, that we now know about, and the possibility that, that kitchens would be used for significant cooking, I, cooking and food prep, I think that three point five sewer rents are more appropriate. So, my recommendation is six water rents and three point five, three point five sewer rents.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, make a, uh.
I make a motion that, um, the assessment, the special assessment for the water be set at six, and the assessment for the sewer be set at three point five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your work on that, Marie. Okay, we'll bounce back to, uh, request purchase, property of fifteen Main Street.
So, we went and double-checked the sidewalk dimensions and such, and we thought it would be important to maintain at least a five-foot sidewalk there, so we adjusted our dimensions to reflect that. And we checked our architectural requirements, and so we were able to push back our requested, make the sidewalk area that we're requesting to purchase, you know, slightly, um, with different dimension. So, we were working with the, um, this sidewalk line, so it starts at seven feet on this side, and then plus or minus seven foot five, our goal is to just work with, you know, along the edge of the, the sidewalk, the fence there. And, uh, we included some illustrations here, with larger image of you there. Then when you look back this way, or, uh, when you wa, look back this way, and this, they're using this as some other functions, but it, we felt that, you know, this was kinda in character of the neighborhood, I know one's is residential, but...
Okay.
And we know that this is subject to change, so we just look for any-
Julie, if, if the board disapproves, um, what would your recourse be?
Uh, either, so we could propose without the roof, perhaps, I mean, that, those are the, the, you know, options that we were running through with the clients, yeah, um, uh, or maybe less deep roof, maybe half cover. And she said, you know, she clarified to us, uh, this past weekend, that her intention was just to put a, a bench, you know, it's not like, um, it's not like Hudson Hills Cafe seating, she's just think, thinking of like a bench here with the overflow of people, not necessarily like a chair.
My question was, if the village, uh, if the board decides not to sell, what recourse does the, uh, property owner have for entrance to a first floor, which is now two feet higher than it is?
Oh, I see, oh, if, if we don't have the, um, I mean, just to step back a little bit, this, this porch area does help with the assisted ADA requirement. Um, so if we don't have that, then we will have to block this area, you know, with the assisted, uh, handicap access, which doesn't quite make sense, I guess we'll lose the parking space.
And, and you wouldn't have an, an entrance on Main Street?
Correct.
Right, but, uh, the concern is that, um, thus far, the village has sold, uh, stoops to people, with, to the best of my knowledge, two exceptions. One happens to be your property on, on, on Main Street, and the other is a piece of residential property on one of the side streets. The concern is setting a precedent of selling sidewalks to adjacent or abutting property owners. Um, so, uh, we sold stoops, but stoops are, are a little different. They, they are not, um, they tend to be, um, pedestrian inhibitors, um, they intend to be tripping hazards. Let's say, um, the people that own, uh, Palin's Drug Store changes to a cafe and wishes to purchase, um, five feet of sidewalk in front of it. Um, that would certainly be, they could claim the village sold seven feet of sidewalk here. And so, we're worried that establish, selling sidewalks, which, which are a very valuable commodity, uh, on Main Street, selling sidewalks is, is setting a precedent that, that we would not want to continue.
And, um, what if, what if the other real need is so that we can provide a, a reasonable means of egress, it's, you know, hardship is on us because of the flood level, we wish we don't have to raise it, that's the thing. And we're trying to raise it halfway and then do a tub and a floodgate, so that we're doing half, you know, half of, uh, mitigation, um, compromise, and we can't raise it four feet, you know, to meet the flood. So, we're trying to see what is a compromise accessible, semi-accessible, you know, with assisted means, um, to get on there, and so the assisted, when we talked to, um, Mr. Warner, he did say, you know, this was allowable, and that we, we would need actually some sort of landing space, like a holding place as a, a side refuge. So, that becomes multi, multi-point, it, it's not just, um, a, a cafe deck, it's not for commercial use necessarily, it's to mitigate the flood plain, it's to mitigate the ADA access, and to not lose the parking, so it's hitting at least three points that I can think of. So, you know, we would, uh, respectfully request a, a special review, uh, for this case.
Two days, a few of you raised the inside of the building from what I understand, two feet, basically. Are you gonna have to raise the, the ceiling to compensate for that, or is it high enough inside?
This front portion is high enough, the back portion, we would have to match the front roof. So, from the street view, you don't, you don't notice any difference.
And the other question, or more of a comment than a question, I mean, we have, we've basically set a price of people to buy stoops, if we're going to, if we do approve selling a sidewalk, I think it should be a different price structure. You know, whether that's here or there, or there right now, I don't know, but I mean, we're selling a whole sidewalk versus a small stoop, you know, or any kind of a stoop would be.
And the hardships that we're encountering, you know, we would ask a special, uh, review on that, you know? ADA, the flood level, and the parking requirement is at least the three that I can think of off the top of my head.
Well, one could argue that the parking requirement is self-imposed, because you're putting an apartment in there. If you weren't putting an apartment in there, you have the entire carport for entry into the building.
But if we have that large space, let's say this is all cafe, then we would need a parking, at least one parking now? I think it would be one or two.
You would, you would apply for, um, parking waivers?
I see, I see.
Well, couldn't a wheelchair access that ran, you know, same direction as the street, basically, but tied to the building, whatever wheelchair access or ADA access width is, with a ramp bringing you into the door, would be a lot smaller than building a whole giant porch across the front also? Like, if we were able to give you permission to make it ADA compliant without, without making the whole porch, you know what I mean, like, that could be a, uh...
I don't know if we can fit that ramp, honestly, I haven't done the exact calculation, um...
Well, you know, if you ran it from east, east to west, across the front of the building or something, with the door basically where it is now.
Yeah, so we would need to go up two feet.
You would need a porch over it and all that other stuff.
So, two feet, twenty-four feet, twenty-four feet. We don't have enough landing when we get to the door, that's, that's the challenge. So, five feet.
What is it, uh, one inch per foot?
Twelve feet, um, one, yes, one to twelve.
So, you need, uh, twenty-four feet?
Yeah. Yeah, so we don't have enough landing at, at the five-foot turnaround landing in front of the door.
Well, you wouldn't have it either with the porch there, but, uh, you have another method of, like, a motorized lift or something like that.
No, it's a hand-assisted, assisted access.
I've never seen that, okay.
I mean, you just, um, have like a bell out there and you call for assistance, um...
So, someone physically helps you out of your wheelchair, or you go up a ramp of some kind, or?
It just, because it's, uh, limited steps, and, um, that's, that's my understanding, that, uh, you just, or assisted.
So, you can't get a wheelchair in there, you're gonna physically take the person out of the chair?
Uh, with the three-foot door, you should be able to get the wheelchair.
But we'd be able to get it up, if you're gonna put steps there, there's no ramp.
So, keep the door open, and I think one person holds the person in the back and the person in the front, and I think that's how it's-
So, pick up the chair and all?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And this is for, I, I consider that as something that was existing, but for a new construction, they, they're not asking you... This, this seems like they would let the assisted, um, version of ADA compliance work if it was existing and there was no recourse, you know? In this, you're building something, and there definitely is ways that you could, you could definitely build a ramp going up to there, using that, that area, I'm not saying to do that or whatever, I'm just, I'm, it's, it's just-
I wish we didn't have to raise the floor.
It's just interesting that the, that ADA would say you could do that.
I mean, we, I wish we didn't have to raise the floor, and this is flood zone, and so we're just trying to design with that in mind, and, um...
I just thought the ADA assisted, um, um, that version of it was so, because there was no, you know, there was no other way that you could get into the building, you know, or it's an existent building.
So, if you have one person working in the cafe, then somebody in a wheelchair will not be able to get in. 'Cause you need two people.
And you can't make your-
And if you have an electric wheelchair, those things are very heavy.
Yeah.
You can't make somebody help somebody out of a wheelchair into the cafe as an employee, that's not like, I guess, that person might not even be capable of it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any ADA anything unless you come up the carport and come in from, from that side, and have a ramp from here around or something to that effect, uh, we've got plenty of space.
My, my major concern is this precedent in selling sidewalks, and, and who's next? Does Hudson House want to, you know, put a deck on the whole south side of their building? And we say no, and they say, well, you just let them do that.
Well, we could, because of the special condition that we're in.
They're down there also.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they've already raised their building, um, um, but we're, we are asking for this because it's a combination of multiple triggers, you know?
I mean, if we don't sell you the sidewalk, um...
We should quit calling it a sidewalk, we're not, we're not gonna sell any sidewalk, and we're leaving five-foot of sidewalk there. What we're selling is the patio, which is brick in front of their building.
If we don't sell you that piece, um, then you have to come back and ask us if you can put stairs in there, which is our, which will then be our property, which, to me, won't be any different from what you have in the straw. You're gonna have stairs anyway, so, uh, it's just a case that, that you want to put the raised deck, which doesn't make-
Well, we're talking a raised deck and a roof.
Right.
Right, but, I mean, the raised deck and the roof, to me, is not for discussion right here, it's a, it's a case of getting into the building. So, if, if you don't, if you cannot buy that piece of, of patio, uh, whether you buy it or not, you have to put stairs to get into that front door.
Yes.
And so, what's the difference if you just come and ask us, can we put stairs on it, on?
They could get in from the side, through the carport.
Right, uh, could do that, or they could come and ask us, can they put stairs on our, on our patio area, which will then belong to us. So, the raising of it, um, to put a bench out there for overflow of people to sit there, doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense to me, is that like, they're expecting a line of people waiting to get in there?
No, it's just for, you know, enjoyment and aesthetics and coverage, so we're trying to combine a lot, right? We're, as architects, we're just trying to solve many problems in a coherent way as possible, um...
So, basically, what you need is entrance to a building that's gonna be raised two feet on the inside.
Right, we're trying to accommodate.
And you need to put stairs either there or on the side.
Correct, and if we put on the side, it, it seems like a shame, but, um, 'cause then this is kind of eaten up by stairs and landing, and then we have a little pathway, and then we have this space for strollers, I guess, you know, that's, um, I don't know what, it's, it's a shame to lose parking space.
There's no way you can lose the parking, I mean, you're gonna be required of that parking if there's a residence there, so...
Yeah, I mean, it would be a shame to lose a parking ability, so, what, what we'd love to see is a good compromise between the flood level, the parking, and entryway, ADA assisted entryway, if we can find a good resolution, um, you know, that, that would be great, and we're trying to do this in an architecturally coherent way, so it doesn't look like things are not slapped on, um, stuck on little things.
When you try to get, I mean, you keep, you keep referring to an ADA entrance when it really isn't, I mean, in my mind, an ADA entrance would be a ramp or something.
Assisted, assisted access.
Right, which, uh, so who's gonna, who's gonna give you approval for an ADA assisted? Does that come from the building department, does that-
My understanding is building department.
So, you, so have you talked to them yet about whether or not an ADA assisted?
Multiple times, yeah, I mean, I personally didn't, um, talk to, uh, Mr. Warner myself, our project, um, architect did, and so, he checked again before, you know, as soon as I got out of last meeting, he, they, you know, just double-checked everything, and he said the criteria that we're providing, you know?
I, I, it, it's not a federal, I thought it was federal law that, you know, you had to have ADA access, you know? And if it was new construction, I would think that you would have to have it not assisted, I-
Well, the new construction, I guess that is the floor level, and then, but the, the new construction...
Well, it seems like it would be if there was no alternative, the only option is that you would have someone like, you know, like, Labushan, they, everything's there, or so they could have that there now, it's built or whatever, so, that would be fine, or in, in different other places where there's stoops and you, there's no other way, you know, to do that. But in this case, you do have an option of, of, of getting into that doorway with a ramp, it would seem to me, but...
Well, this, let me just better understand, the ADA method that, sorry, the method that would be employed to have a mobility impaired person get into the building would be for someone in the building, or, or the mobility impaired person to ring a bell, and that, and someone from within the building would go outside the building and then assist the person in the wheelchair or in a walker, or carry them up the stairs to the, the new floor level, is that correct?
Right.
So, so it's a, it's a, I carry, it's a, somebody has to carry the person up.
Right.
Right, so, it doesn't matter whether or not you've got that width, all you need are stairs that a mobility impaired person can be carried up.
Um, and a, a little side area of refuge, so that, that person, when that person comes out, let's say, um, comes out, this has to be an ADA, uh, compliant door saddle, and so, that person comes out, and I was told that he or she has to have a space that they can wait until somebody can get them out.
So, if you had a four-by-four platform, it's flush with the door sill, that gives you, if you had, uh, twelve-inch, uh, treads on there, that would give you seven feet, so you could have a four-by-seven porch on there and accomplish everything you would want, it would seem.
Architecturally, it wouldn't look great, but architecturally, it would be great to just match the width of the building.
What, what we would be doing is, if we were to approve just the steps and a small portion of porch, is we would be working with the owner to provide them with a method for mobility impaired people, and actually, anyone, to get into the building and get out of the building. And, and, and so it's very, very, uh, very small, sorry, uh, very narrow application of, of selling the property to you, it's a very specific, a very specific sale, to allow patrons, whether they are able-bodied or mobility impaired, to get from the sidewalk into the, the, the new first floor, at, which is higher than the current first floor.
Yes, and I just had an idea, you know, the more I look at this landing, it feels constricted to me. What if we worked with your limitation and, say, we have a landing here, worked up a few steps, and all this was a landing, so there's plenty of room to walk around, would that be accommodating?
It seems to me that we, what I'm envisioning here is a very strict, um, application, a, a very strict use. What's this word I'm searching for? A very, the sale of the property would be very limited to the specific use of-
Assisted, yeah.
A person getting into the building, or a person, a, a mobility impaired person getting into the building. A person getting into the building or a person, a, a mobility impaired person getting into the building. Very, very narrow use.
So I, I was, I think I can work with that and definitely, so I, the more I look at this landing, it bothers me. And, and so if we did, let's say, four steps here and then this became a, a more comfortable area, would that be okay with you?
Well, how far can you bring this here? Let me ask you a question before. Are you gonna keep the door where it is or are you gonna put a new door in?
Keep the door in current location, so this is.
You're gonna have to make, you're gonna have to break the building to make that door higher because you've lost two feet of it.
That, that I know. Yeah, we definitely have to.
Wider as well.
This whole, the, this whole, oops, this whole area is getting reconfigured to raise the door and, and raise the sill height and such, so.
So that has to all go before H D R B because that door is, is, that's all gonna be redesigned.
Yes.
So the door may end up moving.
Yeah, it will definitely move up and it would be wider.
Well, I think what they just did at, at, at the flower shop or what is it, one thirty was the flower shop.
Yeah, I forget.
Is they needed AD, they needed this front entrance there and so they have this with steps going down. They don't have an extended part here. They have minimum what they need with steps going into that area.
Their, their ADA access is on the side, yeah.
So I think.
I mean, if you put an ADA, if you, can you put a lift? You know, an electronic type lift on the side of the building, so if you have an ADA person coming in.
We'd love to.
Like if it's flat.
Except that the flood, you know, if it gets flooded, I don't know exactly how to keep that all waterproofed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know enough, but I'm thinking if it, if it stays flat, then you can still use it for cars and if needed for someone getting in, you would have a lift for someone getting in.
Right.
I don't know anything about the, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we thought about that, definitely. And so if, so if we can do something like this, I mean, this, you know, how, how deep, you know, does this need to be? We can find out, but you're saying, you know, can we keep that just minimally?
Yes.
And so we just need some sort of clear, I, I'll just find out the exact dimension of what that clearance is.
And I think our argument, if anyone wants to just do this like on another building, is we did this because, for this reason, to give you access to it.
Right, right. Understood. And then, so.
So you leave your little cafe area, but you have, you know, you move this here so that you have, you have a good landing and you have.
Right, so if that's worth, well, then the purchasable area would be just exactly what we need for that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think we're getting somewhere. It's better than not having it. And then in terms of coverage, that's with, we just need to get that approved with the zoning board. Because, I mean, I, it'd be nice to have a snow covered, you know, rain, out of rain kind of thing.
And as you said, if, if it's a mobility impaired person, they need someplace to stand on that's protected
Yeah.
before there are people who are assisting them can get to them.
Now, in terms of architecture, because, you know, we have to address it in all three dimensions, now, it would look odd to truncate this coverage just to here. We're just, so we're just trying to make a nice gesture that follows the same building profile.
You get railings coming this way over and then it's going down, that would look fine.
But the coverage, roof coverage, I mean, it's like.
Maybe it's just a, a lower roof than that one. I don't know where the roofs get, where that, how close to the roof line that door is gonna be. Looks like you got quite a bit of base there. You have a small roof coming off of that and it doesn't have to extend from the top.
Shed, shed roof.
Put it on it?
I think if you, if you, if you can come up with a design of that or whatever, I'm, I just don't wanna set a precedent, I'd also talk to our attorney about. I mean, I think I'd be fine with this, but if we were setting a precedent, we need an argument that not everyone that wants to put a porch up is gonna be putting a deck up.
That I understand. I definitely understand that. Okay. I'm just trying to make an architectural sense out of it and if it's only little bit, you know, I would, I would love to just see a little more coherent facade treatment rather than just a little thing that's stuck on.
I think there's plenty of little things stuck on buildings all over the village.
But she wants to have a beautiful building.
Well, I think that you could argue that there's beautiful buildings.
Well, I think that goes with that period, right? And, and this is a very challenging.
What exact period was that?
This one is, I don't know what it is, so we're trying to give some clean, clean stroke of things. Alright, so I appreciate it. I, I think we're getting somewhere, so I, I definitely understand where you're coming from. But if we can, boy, oh, boy.
Back to the drawing board.
Alright, we'll see, you know, exactly how much clearance we need there.
And what we're trying to do is minimize the amount of, of area that you need to accommodate people being able to enter the building.
Right.
We're looking for minimal, or I'm looking for minimal.
I'm looking for minimal.
Footprint, okay. Okay, understood, understood. Alright.
And you could put strollers underneath it. Or just baby strollers, you're gonna know.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jimmy.
You're welcome.
So next we're on. Number three, Resolution oh seven, two thousand nineteen, authorized mayor to enter into contract for sale of real property at one twenty-four Main Street, also known as Jimmy Silver Spoon thing. So, let me, let me get to that. Matt, would you like to say anything on this or?
No, I just, I just came in case you guys had any questions. Similar conversations to this application where we were asking the applicant about making it accessible, building out of town. Obviously, there, you're, you're right, there are mechanical lift solutions down for fifteen main. They're made to be exterior, that's, that's why they're exterior. In the event of a flood, anything electrical is gonna need to be serviced anyway, you know, so I mean, I don't know that that's that compelling, you know. And a lift, obviously, a folding chair lift is only about that wide, about this big. There, there are alternatives. And my understanding of assisted entry has to do with that, for example, you have a, you have a historic building that has narrow doors that can't be motorized. I've never heard of assisted entry where anybody would attempt to pick up a wheelchair and take somebody upstairs. I don't, I haven't worked on a million projects like this, but we've done a lot where historic buildings couldn't be made accessible, so they're assisted entry. But assisted entry basically just means you push the buzzer and somebody, and two people come down and hold the doors open for you while you roll in. And then, and then you went to a chair lift, right? I don't know that anybody would really want to be, you know, trying to maneuver somebody up. That's never been my understanding. Judy's an architect. That may be the case, but clearly a chair lift, which is just a motorized unit, not terribly, you know, expensive, just gets, you know, bolted onto the side and lifts up and then it's all self-service and, and obviously they're exterior units, they're made to get wet. But one twenty-four doesn't have those challenges. He has that grade. He, but then couldn't make it accessible because he said he didn't own the stoop, right? So now he's obviously gonna own the stoop. The planning board would love to see that, that the same, the same focus is given, you know, to this application as well. He'd have to come back to us. His is very simple. He's only got maybe a lip of, you know, less than two inches on the one edge of the stoop that could be feathered, you know, to come in, because obviously it's a public hotel, you know what I mean, it should welcome all guests. So obviously, you guys saw the modifications to the stoop, but obviously rightfully so, wanted to delay the decision on the parking waivers. If the applicant, we were told with that address, ADA wants they own the stoop, so it'd be nice to see that that were to happen. You know, except it's, it is a public building. And as you're well aware, I mean, we, we've had claims in the village of, you know, things not being accessible. But as you, as you, as you guys well pointed out, and I thank you guys for focusing on this, because it's going to be a different response when it is new construction or complete reconstruction and then was not made accessible, right? Cause then that way, then the village is kind of holding hands with these applicants and is not providing access, right?
Although from what Judy said, the building inspector is giving them advice that what they're planning is acceptable.
We, we, we should talk about that. I, I had spoken to him and I got a different answer, so. And I had asked the village attorney to help me understand who's actually, who owns ADA and who's enforcing it. You know, Greg's response to me was it's a federal statute and therefore it's not something that he focuses on. He, he looks at state building code. So I think it's kind of a gap that we might have. I don't, I don't know, just on a couple of conversations, but my concern from the planning board's perspective is that, you know, obviously we look at the site plan and you're gonna see the lift or you're gonna see the ramp or you're gonna see. So while we're not code enforcement, that's not what we do. We do look at general life safety and we're looking at site plan, right? And any access that you provide should be shown on the site plan. It should be, it should be documented as to, as to what the use is. So, but we should talk about that, it would be great. You know, the, if we could speak with Greg and figure out who's covering that. Cause we don't always have a licensed architect. Now, the architect is responsible for complying with all code, including the federal statute. So if you have an architect signing on, Silver Spoon doesn't have an architect. It's an engineer doing some, you know, some of the design and then a draft or doing the rest of it. So I'm not sure if the engineer would be, his license would cover ADA code, I don't think so. My experience as an M V P wouldn't really do that. So on applications where you have an architect, you could certainly say that the burden is on the architect to comply with all code.
Well, Judy is.
Yes, yes.
So.
Well, she's hearing something that she'd rather hear. She's hearing from Greg something that she'd rather hear, she'll, she's gonna jump on that.
Or interpreting it differently.
I think what the mayor says is more accurate.
It's very, it is very complicated. We had to get experts often on projects for ADA. Because there's, the code is very vague and kind of how you provide access and it isn't so much, it isn't so much providing the access. It's when there are challenges to providing the access, right? Like this, the last one I worked on was a historic townhouse, right? That had very narrow doors that were, you know, these original mahogany doors that were only about two feet apart, so it would just sandwich you. So the solution is just if you can't motorize them, you just have a doorbell. Somebody opened, they just hold the door for you. That's all anybody's doing. Nobody's, nobody's actually, you know, lifting you. You know, but in that case, in the building, obviously, if you have a two foot lift, it's just, you know, motorized chair lift. You basically come up and you, you go on to the, you know, you go on to grade. But Jimmy, obviously, in that site can obviously just, I would think we would feather the stoop and create access coming across. And then obviously he's gotta come back to H D R B because he doesn't present anything. He said the stoop was not going to be touched, which is why we're here. And same thing to the planning board, so they have to address that. We'd have to amend the site plan just to show what's going on on stoop.
Okay, so back to oh seven, two thousand nineteen. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. It's the sale of that stoop for seven hundred forty-eight dollars and no sense. So somebody has to make the motion.
So make a motion to who?
To authorize the mayor.
To authorize, thank you, to authorize the mayor to sign, to enter into contract for the sale of real, real property at one twenty-four Main Street.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
It's a wrong call.
Sorry.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller is absent. Trustee Valado?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have the single page?
What's that? I don't have that. I don't have the other one either.
No problem.
I have one page. I have this, unless it got shuffled and the, all of these.
Just that one.
Yeah, so then it's very one also for the, oh, there it is. So next is Planning Board, uh, Planning Board's recommendation, a waiver of three off-street parking spaces for one twenty-four Main Street. I think you might wanna just give us a little on that. I think it's a little, the number of, there were, there were waivers already granted when it was two apartments.
Yeah, so upstairs, there are five rooms. They had asked, every business, historically, what we've done is there's a, there's a parking space grandfather for every Main Street business. He had asked user for the upstairs one. We did, we did not allow that because you, I said, your restaurant is already using it. You know, it's not available to be used. So now when he's coming downstairs and the restaurant goes away, we said, okay, you have one grandfather for Main Street businesses, which we do for every application, and then one per room. So he's adding four rooms. He gets one grandfather, so three waivers. It's one per hotel room. And also on Judy's application too, I get a look at it for fifteen main. It's two parking spaces for an apartment. So I'm not sure that can be met either. So as far as everything kind of being, you know, kind of coupled, you know, the way it was presented, I'm not sure they can all be met. You know, so just to get full information to make your decision. Cause obviously you're right, I mean, and you're, you're smart and you're looking at this practically as far as, you know, precedent and saying, well, what are we doing? We're, you know, we're relying porches to be built, so.
The other.
Right up the sidewalk.
Sorry.
The, the other thing about the, a carport that exists now, the entrance to the apartment is at the southern end of the carport. So people will have to walk on either side of the cars that are parked there to get to the entrance.
Yeah, we had that discussion. I, you, she has, she was very honest about it. She said you could, you really just can only navigate on one side of the car and barely get out.
It seems to me that that would be a life safety issue, but.
Yeah, yeah, and code enforcement, look at that. Well, we would call it out and just kind of say, well, that, how does that really work? I don't know if you can fit two cars in there in tandem, because that's, that's thirty-six feet, right? Cause you need nine by eighteen for a car. So I'm not sure that that, you know, that what you're, that, everything that was talked about being solved by this porch is actually solved by the porch.
The additional roof on the porch, if you carry it over, would give them that, but it's only nine foot wide, the, the actual opening.
Yeah, it's tough, I mean, cause that's a parking space, right? And a parking space, you always kind of allow that there's a little, maybe somebody not to the left or to the right or, you know, somebody didn't park too close and you kind of navigate. She was very honest in our meeting, basically saying that it, you know, you can kind of, you can kind of, you know, wedge your way out of the car, but only on one side. So I don't know.
That, yeah, that space is thirty feet.
Including like, like.
It's not enclosed.
Thirty feet.
It's just thirty feet.
So she'd be hanging out from it.
It's also not enclosed on one side. One side is just a, a post every four feet or so.
Yeah.
So when they, they close that in, then it's gonna be even smaller, unless they leave just four by fours to take them there. It's not a lot of space.
She had talked about it, you know, being, since it's a commonly owned building, about the parking being provided out of service and that doesn't, that doesn't work.
We have to make a formal.
Because it has to be provided on-site for, for residential. And commercial, and waivers are for commercial applications, not for residential.
And the zoning question of being able to come seven feet closer to the street in an already non-conforming building. I mean, I would imagine zoning would struggle with that. Just, you know, right there.
Yeah.
I would think that's as far.
Okay, let's reel it back in.
Sorry. Just three waivers. I mean, that's what's required by code, I mean, for the, for the four, four units, minus the grandfather.
I'll make a, a recommendation or a motion to, to grant the three waivers as recommended by the planning board for one twenty-four Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we have an ad? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is Planning Board Resolution, uh, zero one, two thousand nineteen, granting site plan approval for one twenty-four Main Street.
What is, what is, yeah, why are we getting, yeah, why are, why are we?
No, I'm sorry, that's part of the parking waiver.
Okay, thank you.
To get the parking waiver, you need to see our resolution that we approved the site plan.
Okay, so that is not.
Jeff gave us a different.
But you're welcome to approve it as well. We love it, I just have a eye.
Until we get into this.
Also, once it's Matt's here, I really wanna thank Matt and the boards, cause they're, these applications are getting more and more complicated. It's like just when you think the most complicated one comes, another one comes that has just another twist to it. It's just, it's, so it's never straight. It's really, I'm, I'm really grateful you guys are on there.
Thanks, thanks. And thank you guys for all your help too. The board has been, this has been a great village board to work with, cause it does require a lot of support, I mean, and to kind of figure out what we're looking at.
As an aside, it's helpful when we have something like this, as we did when this first came up, that someone from planning or zoning or whoever's recommending to us shows up here so that we get.
Yeah, I asked Jeff to let me know when it went on the agenda and I show up.
It's much more helpful than us just seeing something and said, oh, okay, planning, planning voted for this, then I guess it's okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
When in reality it isn't.
Yeah, sometimes they're straightforward, this one's, you know, and it got complicated by the work on the stoop that wasn't authorized, so.
Ah, yes, unauthorized work, we'll talk about that.
Okay, next, uh, authorize the village clerk to apply for village credit cards through M and T Bank, two cards to be issued, uh, one for myself and one for the village clerk.
Sure.
Yes.
It sounds dangerous.
It does sound dangerous.
Only if I get
Oh, my God, thank you, sorry.
Wait, are you going next week? I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the, um, village clerk to apply for village credit card. I know that before Jeff came in and even since Jeff has been here, um, Mary used a credit card that has her name on it, uh, Jeff has been using his own credit card, it's complicated, it gets nuts. Luckily, we're good payers, so we're not ruining anybody's credit, but it's much, makes it much easier to have a
They're just getting points.
There's no reason we should be doing that.
That's why they're using their credit cards.
But we can't take off our taxes, uh, so we're paying taxes and it really doesn't, doesn't matter.
So, second McFrance motion?
Yes, okay.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, yes, I can. Approval of TH remodeling to replace village, uh, whole roof as for recommendation of the mayor? Did I send you guys everything?
Yeah, to the back.
Okay, so, after, uh, after, uh, interviewing, or not interviewing, we, I had five different roofers come and check out the roof above us and, uh, and go over everything with them and they all sent in their quotes, uh, although TH isn't the lowest, they're, uh, second lowest by, well, actually the lowest had hardly anything included, um, that was asked for and took forever to get and we just waited for them. Um, the second lowest, um, they didn't have everything that was included that TH remodeling is, so remodeling, uh, TH remodeling included more, uh, more work and, uh, I think a better, better product in the end, so it's only a few hundred dollars difference, so I recommend we go with the TH remodeling, so I will, I will make a motion to, uh, approve TH remodeling to replace the roof.
Second.
Any further discussion or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, maybe. Uh, next, approve hiring of part-time labor for recreation commission at a rate of sixteen dollars an hour. Um, I contacted Bruce, he did a good job for us last year, he's familiar with all the parks and willing to do it again this year. Um, so, uh, Jeff looked into part-time last year, we had, had him at seasonal, which limits us to the amount of time he can, uh, he can put in, so this gives us a little more flexibility. So, uh, I'll make a, uh, motion to, uh, hire Bruce as the part-time labor for recreation commission at a rate of sixteen dollars an hour.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, approve quote from Managed Technologies for purchase and installation of computer service rack.
Yay.
Somebody wanna, does anyone know?
Um.
I know it's the, uh, the mess that's upstairs in one of the police offices that needs to be
Yeah, all the, all the equipment that's on the floor needs to be put in a rack, um, and that's been a pending issue for a while and I think Michelle would like to get it done this year while we still have money in the budget to cover it, um.
Guess they're pretty close on that, yeah.
Yes, thirty-six hundred.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, Managed Technologies to move ahead with purchase and installation of a computer server rack at the cost of thirty-six hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of bills?
Bills, I know, I have them somewhere. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve batch number five zero forty-six, in the amount of fifteen thousand five eighty-one point one nine.
Could you read the number again? Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand five eight one point one nine.
Point one, thank you.
One, eight, yep.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last is, uh, approval of minutes, uh, three nineteen nineteen, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, uh, anything else from the board? Anything from the audience?
What was the cost of the roof repaired at?
Uh, was eighteen thousand, and that's prevailing wage, unfortunately.
Nice.
That's quite a bit of money to it, that's for sure. Anything else?
What's the next step in this fifteen Main Street thing?
I think if, it sounded like she was gonna use, put her architectural wizardry on the front porch and try to make it stairs coming off the side, not going out into the, towards